When you are.
Good evening. We'll call this public hearing on the 2026 Allegheny County tentative budget to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Barnes? Mr. Passat?
Here.
Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Mr. Curran?
Here.
Mr. Demick?
Here.
Mr. Fanton?
Here.
Mrs. Hanchett?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Havy?
Here.
Mr. Healy? Mr. La Forge?
Here.
Mr. Ricky?
Here.
Mrs. Rickett Swales?
Here.
Mrs. Root?
Here.
Mr. Stocken?
Here.
Fourteen present, two absent.
Thank you, ma'am. Right now, I'll turn it over to the budget officer for an opening message.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to tonight's public hearing on the proposed tentative operating budget for 2026. The purpose of this hearing is to afford the public with an opportunity to become familiar with our proposed spending plan on behalf of the citizens of Allegheny County. Further, the public will be afforded the opportunity to provide comment for the members of the Board of Legislators. The operating budget was compiled with input from the county department heads, budget officer, and the legislative budget committee. The tentative budget was filed on November 5, 2025. If you do not have a copy of the tentative budget and would like one, they are available on a table just outside the back of the room. For anyone listening at home, the tentative budget is also available on the county website, right on the homepage, down towards the bottom. The appropriations portion of the budget, which is the only portion we review during the public hearing, is comprised of 18 major categories, beginning with general government support and ending with the debt service fund. The clerk of the board will read the total appropriated amount for each major category. We will then pause and ask if anyone has comments with regard to that specific category or any departmental cost center contained in that category. Once all comments have been received, we will proceed until we have worked through the entire budget. On a final note, I would like to remind those in attendance that the sole purpose of this hearing is to address the tentative budget. This hearing is not intended as a forum to debate the value or necessity of any particular county agency or program. Anyone who has a desire to express his or her opinion with regard to individual programs or services should do so with your elected legislative representatives at another time. If during this public hearing you wish to address the Board of Legislators, please come forward, and we have a little podium there with a microphone, and you'll state your name and identify the town in which you live, and then you'll give your comments. So I'll turn this back over to our chairman, Harris.
Thank you. So as everyone knows, copies of the tentative budget are available on the Allegheny County website. There's also hard copies here available in the clerk of the board's office. I thought before we got to public comment, we had worked our way through just some of the broad strokes of the budget itself and respond to some of the questions we've received over the last couple of months in regards to budget, particularly expenditures and the property tax cap. I'm going to fly through this quickly because I know kickoff is at like 8:20. So this year, our total appropriations for the budget are a little bit over $158 million. As you can see, that's an increase of 2.6% over the previous year. So I always have to remind myself when you look at total appropriations that it's not always just bad news. In other words, if some of the fruits of our labor, when it comes to trying to secure outside funding in the terms of competitive grants and so forth, if those come in, that's reflected in that amount of $158 million. So if we received a grand award in the amount of $4 million that we anticipate in '26, that would wholly be represented within total appropriations. Below that is the tax levy. That's what we've all been talking about the last couple of months. As those of you who may have been watching, we passed a tax cap override to exceed that 2% tax cap. We'll get into that a little bit more in a second here, but the tentative budget as presented provides for a 2.22% increase in the tax levy. When I say levy, that refers to the total amount of money that the county needs to raise in property taxes in order to balance the budget. Below that is the countywide tax rate. As you can see, this tentative budget projects $12.25 per thousand. That's a decrease of just over 4% in countywide tax rate. And again, this comes with a caveat as well because that's countywide average. So for some towns, depending on all sorts of factors, but not the least of which is their equalization rates, they may see an increase. Other towns may see a decrease greater than 4%, but that's the countywide average. So what does that mean in terms of the average $100,000 home? That $12.25 at the bottom, decrease of $52, would be a sample tax liability for a property owner that had a property value to $100,000. And I'm always looking at the treasurer to see if she's rolling her eyes or shaking her head like this guy doesn't know what he's talking about. So far, so good?
So far.
Okay. So within this tentative budget, the budget officer and the deputy budget officer have projected sales tax revenues in 2026 of $29,565,000. From my perspective, that's a very conservative estimate. We're going to hit that this year. We certainly hit it the two previous years. It's always a danger to try to get too close to the actual number in sales tax projection because if you miss it, you end up in a situation like the city of Olean was in their last budget year where they missed their projection and had to come up with some very serious mid-year cuts. Below that is anticipated state aid and federal aid. That is pretty consistent from year to year. General fund utilization, that is the amount of the piggy bank that the budget officer and the deputy budget officer have determined we need to use out of our savings in order to balance this budget and level out the property tax rate. That's $500,000 more than we budgeted last year. That's, I think, in everybody's opinion, an aggressive number. And maybe I'll be wrong on this one. It's a little bit over a third, I think, of our total available general fund. But as we all know, general fund is kind of a moving target in terms of just how much we have available to us. So this chart just demonstrates what are the big four revenue sources for county operations, and I apologize that the writing is so small. But if we start at, say, 2 o'clock on the clock there, that 32%, that's our tax levy. And if we're going clockwise, that 29% is revenue brought in through sales tax. After that, the 24% is state aid, and then up in the top-left corner is federal aid. So pretty close to what we've seen historically in the last 10, 15 years. It doesn't waver too much. There were some significant changes in state and federal aid due to COVID funds. We've kind of settled back into our normal split there. So this is just a demonstration. You know, the board has been, while always recognizing that Allegheny County's property tax rates are high, we are proud as a board that we continue to be able to come out with budgets that reduce the overall countywide average tax rate. So this is just a 10-year look back. You see back in 2017, and this is rate per thousand. Back in 2017, we were over $16 per thousand. With this tentative budget, we're $12.25. So it's been 16 years in a row that the county has passed a budget that demonstrated a tax rate decrease. So further demonstration in how aggressive we've tried to be in lowering the rate, that red line on the top is the upstate average tax rate, and the orange line below is the Allegheny County rate. Now, big-time caveat here. If you look at those numbers on the left, the, again, this is rate per thousand. So the upstate average, as you can see, is floating between 4% and $5 per thousand. If you look at the numbers on the right, that 11.5 up to 17.5, that's where we are in Allegheny County. So in reality, we are three times the state average in terms of rate. Now, there's lots of reasons for that. The largest reason for that is our low assessed value. So in other words, Allegheny County ranks lowest in New York State in terms of median home value. And so while our liability as property owners may be some of the lowest in the state, what your actual tax bill says at the bottom, which is in the 22 to $2400 range for the average home, that's very good by New York State standards. But in terms of rate, we're very high and continue to be. All right, this is a scary-looking chart here, and this is the tax levy. So we're back now. We're not talking about the rate. We're talking about the pot of money we need to raise in property taxes to balance the books. So as you can see, this is another 10-year look back, and from 2017 on down to 2020, we were effectively lowering the overall liability for county residents, and we've crept up since then and really ramped up since COVID. Largest reason for that is inflation. So the two lines you're looking at here, the bottom line is our tax levy. That yellow line demonstrates that if we as a board had decided 10 years ago to just match the rate of inflation with our tax levy, we would be asking the board to pass a budget with a tax levy in excess of $40 million. So while our levy is going up, we're being well outpaced by inflation, and so, at least from my perspective, that demonstrates fiscal responsibility. This is another way to look at it. That orange line, again, is the rate of inflation. So now, if you look over on the left, those numbers from $1 to $1.40. A dollar in 2016 can only be achieved through spending of $1.36 or $1.37 now. So in other words, it takes a lot more money to achieve the same goals as we did as a county. And when I say goals, I mean services provided, projects completed and so forth, roads and bridges completed. And all the while, as you can see, we've successfully been lowering the rate. And again, a large reason for that is because we've had large increases in county assessed value. People in Wellsville know that a large reason their rate may be going down as a property owner is because their assessments have doubled and tripled in some cases. So there's been a lot of talk about the 2% tax cap. I did want to just make a point that 2% in terms of what the state determines is allowable for you to raise in your tax levy is not 2%. It's actually very rarely exactly 2%. And what you see over there on the right is the state comptroller's formula that each municipality has to use to determine what their actual allowable tax cap is. So I can't read it anyway, but even if I could read it, I wouldn't. But long story short, it's a very convoluted formula that takes a lot of factors into consideration. So what we determined this year was that the permissible tax cap in Allegheny County was around 2.2%. Now, due to who-knows-why, a rounding error or just bad luck, this tentative actually does come out exceeding the allowable tax cap by $10,000. So for fun this morning, I was trying to -- I know Terry is so mad about it. I was trying to figure out what percent that is over 2.2%. It's something like 0.00006% over our allowable tax cap. So the good news is, we can correct that problem through amendments to the tentative, which we always have. There's always, for the new board members, there's always housekeeping kind of amendments that need to be done between now and when we pass the budget. But between now and when we vote on the budget, there's opportunities for us to do really whatever we want. We could increase our projected sales tax. We could increase the amount of fund balance utilized. We could cut programs. We could add to programs. We could eliminate a piece of equipment in DPW. You know, we could add a piece of equipment in DPW. So this is our opportunity between this public hearing and when we vote to determine what we want to do. I would expect we're going to try to find that $10,000 so we don't override the tax cap. You'll note in the budget officer's message that actually there's very good financial reason to stay within the cap as well because the state has a tied adherence to that tax cap to many of their funding streams. So anytime a municipality elects to actually override the cap, they have to determine if they'll actually lose more money in funding than they would gain by raising the property taxes in excess of the cap. So I asked the treasurer to generate this list for me, and it's a list we track year to year. And these are kind of the big seven, and I know the taxpayers are tired of hearing about us blame unfunded and underfunded mandates for our problems. But these are the big cost drivers in terms of underfunded mandates that force us to have such a high tax rate. So the big one at the top, I'm not going to read through them all, but the big one at the top is Medicaid local share. That in and of itself represents about a third of the total tax levy. It does every year. With all the excitement down in DC and up in Albany, this is the one that really has us concerned, that if the federal government continues to make cuts to states in terms of support of Medicaid, that the state is going to pass those costs on to counties and eliminate what -- there is a cap that exists right now in the local share, and that $10 million represents the cap. We're terrified that the state's going to eliminate that cap and ask counties to increase their contributions toward Medicaid. So if you go all the way down to the bottom, you see just those seven items, and of course, there are dozens more unfunded mandates out there, account for $26 million in state and federal programs that we are obligated to provide that are not funded. And that accounts for 85 or 90% of our tax levy. So to answer the question that people may be having in regards to why our appropriations or our total spending from '25 to '26 is going up 4%, this is another list provided by the treasurer to give some examples of costs to the county that have gone up that we have little or no control over. The big one there is contractual salary increases. $1.7 million. The two below that, medical insurance and retirement contributions, that's fringe associated with county workforce. So medical insurance, we really don't have any control over that. The state lets us know what our obligations are year to year in terms of retirement contributions. The mental hygiene law increase is one of those that's just really a challenge for small rural counties, and that's related to having to provide services, very expensive services, to people in need. And in this case, it may be, you know, two or three county residents that need specialized care that could cost you up into the seven figures, and we're in that situation right now. Contractual is a bit of a catch-all in terms of contracts that the county is associated with that have built-in increases year over year, and that's just for general county operations. Social Services in and of itself is experiencing a significant cost shift related to the changes in federal priorities in terms of entitlement programs. So we're very concerned as well about effects on administrative costs, particularly in regards to SNAP. CAC is the Child Advocacy Center. When we took that over, I don't know if it was three, four years ago, that was not, I wouldn't say self-sufficient, but it was funded entirely with outside money. And we're recognizing now that we have costs in excess of $300,000 of local money that we have to apply towards Child Advocacy Center. So total those up. And again, that's just a sample of the hundreds, probably, of increases we're experiencing across the board in operations and providing services. But just those items there account for $6 million, which is, of course, $2 million more than the increase in total appropriations. Okay. So we're looking forward to hearing public comments tonight, and we do listen and we do take it very seriously, and we do take it into consideration. So once we receive public comment this evening, we're also going to receive next week, we give our department heads the opportunity to plead their case from any changes that were made, from the department head requests in terms of their budget asks to what was actually submitted with the tentative. Department heads will have an opportunity to speak with the board about that. After that, the Ways and Means Committee has the opportunity to consider amendments to the tentative and request that a resolution be generated that details all of those amendments. So when I say amendments to the tentative, I mean add money here, take money away there, whatever the board feels they think is appropriate to get to a final budget. Once Ways and Means does that, it gets forwarded to the full board, and the board will vote on both the resolution, amending the tentative, and then we'll vote on the budget itself. And that's the five-minute spiel on the budget. That QR code we'll leave up there, that's a direct link to a PDF of the tentative budget in its entirety, and then that link there at the bottom will get you to the same place. So with that said, I would like to open up the floor to public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board at this time? Sir? Oh, I'm sorry. Can I pause you, sir? I was so rude to the clerk of the board, I forgot. She's got a message to read, and then she'll read the first cost center, and then we'll get you up there. So I apologize to both of you.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
The 2026 tentative budget, which is the subject of tonight's public hearing, is a joint effort of our county budget staff, the budget committee of the Board of Legislators, and our department heads. The tentative budget, when considering all nine major appropriation funds, totals $158,593,704. Offsetting these appropriations are anticipated revenues of $114,346,585, appropriated reserves of $140,000, and appropriated fund balance of $12,293,085, leaving a balance of $31,814,034 to be raised in county property tax to balance the budget. The property tax levy necessary to balance the 2026 tentative budget represents an increase of $691,110 or 2.22% from the property tax levy contained in the final 2025 county budget. The average county property tax rate for 2026 decreased by 52 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value as compared to the '25 average county tax rate. The 2025 average rate was $12.77 per thousand dollars of assessed value, and the '26 average rate is $12.25 per thousand. It is expected that a final county budget will be adopted by the Board of Legislators at its regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, December 10 at 2:00 p.m. The first category that we're going to look at is on pages 1 through 10 in your budget. It's total general government support. That total is $15,595,912. Are there any comments?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your patience.
I'm going to warn you, I'm not a good speaker. And I'm probably going to break the rules. Like you said, I'm sorry. My name is Chris Lowensberry. I reside in Ward, New York, having grown up in Syo. I'm here to express my dissatisfaction with the persistent attacks on the working families in this county. We are caught in an endless cycle, which begins with raising taxes, and then more taxpayers leave, which results in higher taxes to those who remain, and thus more leave. This also results in us being an unappealing county to conduct business in. When businesses leave, more people depart or rely on assistance, shifting the tax burden to a dwindling working population. Observing the county, it appears that nearly half of the jobs are taxpayer-funded. While some states strive to eliminate property taxes, we continue to burden our working-class homeowners. As a small community, I have always appreciated our ability to come together and support one another, and I urge legislators to do the same. With the advent of computers and digitalization, I expect administrative tasks to become more efficient, but instead, cuts are made to lower-paid, blue-collar workers who are the backbone of this county. While administrative personnel receive substantial pay raises and enjoy the comforts of an air-conditioned and heated offices, I propose that we eliminate unnecessary administrative positions, review every county-funded program, and assess its impact on the working families. We should strive to attract business and refrain from overtaxing or overregulating them. It seems that the local governor often fails to develop solutions to stay under the tax cap. In my opinion, we need to consolidate schools and municipalities, cut all funding to taxpayer programs that don't help taxpayers, and cut all unnecessary administration positions. We must work together to find solutions rather than allowing the problem to devastate our communities. Soon, the only remaining residents will be taxpayer-funded employees and those who rely on the government assistance. I would like to express my gratitude for those who voted against that tax cap proposal, particularly Kevin La Forge, who listened to the community, demonstrated independence, and understands the challenges of running a business in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next category? The next category is on page 10, total education, $3,440,217. Are there any comments? Continuing on pages 11 to page 19 is our total public safety category totaling $14,313,211. Are there any comments? On pages 19 to 24 is our total health category. That total is $7,722,130. Are there any comments? On page 24, you'll see bus transportation for a total of $2,257,000. Any comments? On pages 24 through 31 is total economic assistance and opportunity. That total is $39,231,249. Any comments? The next category on pages 31 and 32 is our culture and recreation. That total is $550,643. Any comments? On pages 33 and 34 are home and community services accounts. That total is $3,219,866. Any comments? On page 34 and 35, our employee benefits totaling $7,954,000. Any comments? On page 35, our inter-fund transfers totaling $24,455,296. At the bottom of page 35 is our grand total for our general fund, which totals $118,739,524. On pages 36, I'm sorry, were there any comments on the general fund? On page 36 and 37, you'll see our WEA grant fund totaling $1,189,17. Are there any comments? On page 38 and 39, you'll see our risk retention fund totaling $290,000. Are there any comments? On page 40, you'll see our health fund. That total is $10,874,000. Are there any comments? On page 41 and 42, our county road fund totaling $17,828,863. Are there any comments? On page 43, you'll see our road machinery fund. That total is $3,118,085. Are there any comments? On pages 45 through 52 are our capital projects fund. That That total is $3,289,500. Any comments? Page 53 is our total self-insurance fund totaling $970,000. Comments? Page 54 is our debt service fund totaling $2,294,715. On page, also on page 54, you'll see our total appropriations for 2026 totaling $158,593,704. And that concludes our major categories.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to add comment before we close the meeting?
Hello, Lori Hennessy, Wellsville, New York. I want to express, I know how you feel when you said you were terrified about them raising the cap on the Medicaid funds. It's how we all felt that we're in attendance when the budget meeting happened for the 2% cap. I thank you for all the work on your budget. I know the department heads, everybody worked really hard on those. But the fact of the matter is, those numbers are really reassuring, and it was nice to hear that. But I'm going to bet with my reassessment in Wellsville, New York, that when my tax bill comes in January, it's going to be more money out of my pocket than it was last year. So, the fact of the matter is, it's still costing us more. It's still costing all the residents more, even though with all your hard work. And I encourage and implore and beg that you find more ways to cut. I don't know if you, any of you had the chance to read the email I sent. Government isn't always the answer. I lived through a, a program being eliminated for lots of reasons, and looking back on it, it all worked out. The end result was the resident Allegheny County Department of Health. The residents had, were all transferred, received care, received good care. The county got a big check from a private company, and everybody that wanted jobs found jobs. So, cutting programs is very hard, and yes, I thought it was the end of the world when it was happening, but it wasn't, and it turned out to be the best thing. And if there's a need, hopefully, a private company will come in and pick it up. So, if you have to cut programs, it's not the end of the world. Just feels like it at the time. Thank you again for your work.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. My name's Angela Tinder. I live in Wellsville. I wanted to ask a question about the underfunded mandate slide. The top of the list was Medicaid, just over $10 million a year. My question, I'm wondering if anyone knows, just kind of off the top of your head, that local share, what percentage is that of the actual Medicaid bill for the county? If our local share is a certain amount, then the state and the federal government kicks in some other amount?
I would be guessing, maybe Terry's got it.
Our total Medicaid cost is about $70 million, so the $10 million is a little over 1, probably almost close to 1.4, maybe 1.5% of the whole.
So, for that $10 million, while it's a very large amount, the state and the federal government contribute a lot of money to the cost of healthcare of Allegheny, much, much more than, than we do. So, I was looking, I saw on one of the early pages here, education services, healthcare and social services are the biggest industry in the county, and I'm certain that a lot of that is funded by Medicaid. I just kind of wanted to say that because it, it does look scary to see $10 million of local share, but we also have to recognize that is a very small portion of the amount of money that is contributed to the cost of healthcare of Allegheny County residents, and so many of us are employed by those industries. I just kind of wanted to, to share that. Brooke, you, you talked about kind of the instability in federal funding, not understanding, not knowing how the state's going to adjust to cuts, federal cuts. You also talked about sort of some, some recent changes to funding of really important programs, like the Child Advocacy Center, and, and learning that there's not going to be the funds available that we thought there were going to be. My question is, of the total budget for the county, what portion of that is funded by state and federal funds? How stable are those funds in 2026? And what is the plan if there continues to be cuts or instability in those funding sources?
Combination of state and federal funds accounts for about 25 or 30% of our overall appropriations.
Okay. Do you anticipate those will, that there might still be instability in that funding in 2026?
Yes.
And then what will we do?
I, I, I can't speak for the board. The board would have a decision to make. You know, other counties have talked, there's only two things you can do. You can cut services, or you can backfill with local dollars. And I do know that other counties are utilizing their fund balance, or at least were temporarily, to backfill some of the instability in SNAP. I don't know if this board would feel comfortable utilizing local tax dollars to, to backfill. I think we would probably do what we've done in the past. I've never been involved personally in large federal or state funding cuts to the county, but I would expect we would adjust our services appropriately.
Does it feel to the board like that's more of a possibility at this moment than it has been in the past?
This moment meaning this administration?
Well, yeah, just, just this moment in time, that there's more of a possibility of large, kind of unexpected large funding cuts from our federal, federal and state funding cuts.
Only speaking for myself, I would say yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any board members want to help me out here? Let me flap in the wind.
Mr. Chairman, I would say the very beginning of COVID was maybe a little bit more frightening because we actually did have a very large pause in state funds as well as federal funds, and we had no idea if they would open those floodgates back up. Now, they ultimately did, but if you remember, we, we went on a hiring freeze. We said no unnecessary travel, a lot of things trying to hold back. We actually didn't pay some of our contracts. We made people go invoice by quarterly when they normally did annually, and we took some, some measures just in case we didn't get paid, but it all worked out at the end of the day for that year.
That was a little, and I'm not debating, but I feel like that was a little different only because we were forced into a shutdown that kind of, it, it was austerity, like it was forced austerity. In this case, where you're losing federal funds, but the, the services are supposedly still in place, it would be, it would be more decision-making involved than it was with COVID.
Both scary.
Both scary. Both scary. Any thoughts from the board? Are there any members of the public, any additional members of the public that wish to address this budget? If not, I do, I apologize. I should have done at the beginning of the meeting. I do want to thank our Budget Officer, Carissa Knapp, and our Deputy Budget Officer, Terry Ross, and our Budget Committee Chair, Jan Burdick, for all their hard work on this budget. I think just from the cheap seats, I know that it was an extraordinarily difficult budget to build with more aggressive red pen work than normal. So, we, we as a board certainly appreciate your work. I look forward to hearing the board's thoughts and ideas on amendments to the tentative as we move forward. And with that, I will close the public hearing and wish you good night.